Call to order, a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, April 30th, 2015. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to remind the public that the meeting is being recorded and ask you to silence your cellphones and ours as well, I guess. We will, I'll just say first, Mrs. Warren is not able to be here tonight. She had a conflict and Dr. Hutchinson and Mr. Gilligan are presently at the Prestash Award Ceremony and we'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. So that's why the head table is a little bit smaller than normal. So we'll go to public comment if there's any. Public comment? None?
Moving on.
All right. There's no recognition tonight. For the students, Nick Corci is actually playing in a lacrosse game tonight and Nicole Stevens is at the Prestash Ceremony because her mom is one of the recipients from the high school, Diane Stevens. Our other recipients of the Prestash are Jennifer Scarpa and Terry Holland as well, but I thought it was, I didn't recognize the name when, when I saw that and Nicole introduced herself again tonight. So we'll now go into the public hearing for the school choice participation. And if I'm correct, it's just an opportunity for anyone in the public to speak about reasons why we would utilize school choice or any personnel comments. Correct?
Correct.
Probably formally open the public hearing. Move to open a public hearing.
Move to open a public hearing.
Other than school choice.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Yes, sorry. There's no publics, that's why I'm kind of baffled. So all in favor of having an open discussion regarding school choice participation in the 2015-2016 school year?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we are now in a public hearing for that. Is there any comment?
Well, I think it's probably important just to review what, why this comes up every year, what the impact is, and I think that's, it's at least important. So we have procedures for public hearings, they're in the packet. School choice is something that we need to make an annual decision on and our choices are to open our schools to any and all comers or remain closed to, out of, out of our district placements. And for the past, well, I can't recall for how long, but for almost forever, we've chosen to stay a closed district.
Correct.
And Mr. Mueller, if you want to amplify our rationale.
Yeah, there are two main reasons. One being space, which comes as a surprise to nobody, is an issue. It's not like we have a lot of room at our schools for students coming from somewhere else. And district around our district, most of the school districts have a gentleman's agreement that they're not going to participate because what happens is once one school does it and starts getting students, then the other districts feel the need to, to gain students back so they, they all tend to do it. The only two in or around us that do it are Haverhill and Georgetown. That really has not had an impact on the, on our school district at least. So for those two reasons, since I've been here and I'm sure much longer than that, we've always recommended not participating in school choice.
I think it's also important to realize that the decision is not at a level or a grade, it's, it's all or none.
Correct.
So that also, I think, impacts, it's not like if we have room in certain, certain grades to offer that for, for others, it's all or none. And that's one of, one of the biggest concerns that has, at least in my mind, been on the table as we, as we face this decision.
There was some interesting conversation this week from the Massachusetts School Committee Association members that were there and one of them was, you know, once a student is allowed in or accepted in as a school choice, they are there until they graduate, which I actually thought was an important distinction as well, so. And if we were to start at one year and family members were to come in and a subsequent year, there was a younger sibling who wanted to attend, they are, they, they could actually, we could not have an open school choice that year and so you'd have families in multiple different towns, so. Okay. Anything else? Anything?
No public comment?
All right.
Any other comments?
So I would now.
Move to close the public hearing.
Yeah, right. I would move that we close the, or suggest, entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All right. No noes and we are moving ahead. We'll look at consent agenda, so approval of regular session minutes and it is from February 26th and March 5th meetings. Meetings are in the packet. I don't know if anyone has any corrections or updates.
Mr. McDevitt, before we move on, do we have to vote now or do we vote at some other point to deny school choice?
It's actually a first reading in new business.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
Moving.
So Mr. Chair, move to approve it.
The minutes has presented the packet from February 26th and March 5th.
Mr. Mueller, you might be taking these as separate votes because I wasn't here for the February 26th meeting.
Oh, no, that's fine.
So I modify the, the proposal to approve minutes as presented, 26th Feb., as presented.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor of the February 26th minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. So thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes as presented packet from March 5th, 2015.
Okay. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay. And any updates or discussion?
I just have one correction requested. The first bullet on approval of private school, that should read private school program of study. I think that was the, the topic that we were discussing.
Approval of private school. Okay. Okay.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Good.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes as presented in the packet with the exception noted by Mr. Gross?
Aye.
Say aye. All right. They're moving along. We'll go into Chair's report and so, you know, we mentioned it earlier, but I just want to take a quick minute and just recognize again the recipients of this year for the Prestash Award. Diane Stevens, Jennifer Scarpa, and Terry Holland. For those of us who are with kids in the, in the schools and kind of attend different events, these names are really not strangers to any of us. They are such role models for the kids and for the students and it is just an unbelievable asset that we have them in our community and I'd like to thank the Prestash Committee for selecting these recipients because I think that they are certainly very well deserving of this. I think it's also interesting to note that I think this has been given out for 10 years now. I could be off on that, but I think it's 10 and this is the first time that there has been a male recipient of the award. Terry, Terry Holland, it's almost unimaginable that he wasn't recognized earlier considering I think he donates and supports to everything in town, but it's fantastic to see that he is being recognized tonight for his service as well as Diane and Jennifer as well. I do want to call to attention two other quick things and one is this past Sunday at the library, there was the poetry night and there was over 160 students who participated in that and the town's Noel Lauret, poet Lauret, sorry, recognized over 40 of them for their poems and their creativity and their work with that. And for the elementary school parents, there is a packet that is coming out at some point this week. I don't know when it will go out in backpacks, but there is a literacy program that is being offered and I believe it's for a certain section of the summer to help children with literacy and kind of getting ahead for the next year as well, so.
You segue to a new item.
Sorry?
You segue to a new item.
I did, I did. I just, I jumped to bullet number three. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing about the, the poetry reading. At such a great, I don't know if you'd call it a replacement for, for the apple seed, apples, all that activities we were doing, this is such a town-oriented activity now and it really, I think, fits well within our schools and what we're trying to do here. So I think it's a great replacement and I, I think we should also thank Karen Klein for all the enthusiasm and energy she brings to the whole poetry field here in North Andover. So we, at some point, we probably ought to try to thank her and acknowledge her efforts in all of this. She's been great at trying to get this to happen.
Great. Thank you. Is there any place that we could partake in some of the, the poetry or?
I will, I'll work with Mr. Gilligan, I can't speak, Mr. Gilligan and see if we can get some of them maybe to come and present or read some poems.
That would be fabulous, or even just posting.
I know it is, I believe it's on the webpage.
It is, okay.
I will double check that, but I don't have internet right now. And that was all I had for the Chair's report. Do you have anything for Superintendent's report?
I would have to pass on a couple of pieces of information, one being that the last day of school is June 23rd. It's a half day, as it usually is. And the early release dates you have, they've been finalized two per month. That's one less than last year. The attempt was made to kind of make them more consistent, whether it be the second and fourth week or so, holidays make that difficult in some places, but where we could, that was done. One other part of that is that the recommendation is that the early release be increased by 15 minutes for the elementary. What they were finding is that the bus duty, getting the students on their way home, was cutting into that hour. So if we increase it by 15 minutes, it would give them the solid hour that they're looking for.
Okay.
Yep. And then I'll add one more piece of information. On June 16th, from 6 to 8, that will be the open house for the new school administration building. Everyone's welcome to come by, take a look. Our plan is to move in after that date by July 1 and, and be up and running. We'll still have a month left on our lease that will allow us to kind of get up and running at the new building, but then decide on the stuff that doesn't have to necessarily be there. We've got a lot of stuff, as you can imagine, records that we just actually had a guy from the state come by to talk about record retention and what our obligations are and so we've kind of tried to develop our program for where we're going to keep things and the different categories that they're in and we'll be able to work through that.
Will you be bringing over much furniture from Oscar Blanding or how?
Yeah, the, right now, what we're doing is we're utilizing funds in the project to purchase all of the kind of public area furniture and have it a consistent look and new. And then the, we actually were fortunate, we went to the FCC up in, I want to say Burlington, but it was in that area when they were closing up a building and we were able to get quite a bit of furniture, some good stuff, and we've been storing that. So the furniture that's in the offices won't be the same, but it's, it's in good shape and we'll utilize that.
This is all the stuff that was in the Atkinson basement?
It's in the Atkinson basement and it's in storage yet. $1,600, good.
Great, cool.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Looking forward, looks like it's come a long way since the days of snow.
Yeah, it's almost there. Yeah.
So we're going to jump into old business and that is, you're going to be in the hot seat for the fiscal year 15 budget update.
Mm-hmm. It hasn't changed all that much. We did, this is just an example of what we face. We had a move in just recently and because that student was already an out of district placement, normally if it's a private placement, then the sending district is responsible for that student through the end of that school year. When the student is in a collaborative though, I'm not sure why this is the case, the receiving district is automatically, right away, responsible for that student. So we just had a student move in and it's going to cost us $35,000 for the rest of the year for that student. So it's just an example of, of what we deal with.
Can you explain for a minute, what do you mean when you say a private versus collaborative?
Yeah, well, the private schools are, they're a single entity and, you know, they're serving whoever they choose, whereas the collaboratives such as GLEC, which we belong to, service, you know, a region and members within that.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding you correctly.
Yep.
So when does that, or when did that impact us? Was that, has that already happened? They've already moved in?
They just, they moved in within the last couple of weeks. Yep.
So we have two months' worth of exposure, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct. So that's just an example. It's already been included in why that out of district tuition number has gone up by that amount. So you can see how much more than we had anticipated out of district tuition is in transportation. So other than that, not a lot has changed, other than I highlighted in the where we're making things up, that doesn't sound right, but.
Closing the gap.
Yeah, closing the gap. I've included the utility savings number. That was somewhat incorporated already into school budget reductions. We've been moving that money as we go to, you know, in order to fund things that were needed during the year. So you can see right this year, our utility savings, they were completing that ESCO project projecting to be about $110,000. The guarantee for the future full year is, is $280,000. So the projected school deficit is still about 347. I got the update from Lynn Savage. Their projected snow and ice is $906,000 and.
That's the towns, correct?
That's the, right, the municipal deficit. And Hutch and I met with Lynn and Andrew Mailer today talking about the logistics and we're going to be working closely with Lynn Savage in the next couple of weeks to finalize our number so that if we have to go to town meeting for any type of adjustment to the budget, that'll be ready to go.
Okay. There was talk at one point of additional funds coming from the state.
We didn't qualify.
We didn't qualify.
No. Although.
He was, he was $35,000?
Yeah, yeah.
But that had to be, that was based off of what, like a March 1 date or something?
It was March, I think it was March 31st.
Okay.
Yeah. And we came close, we came within about that amount, about $35,000. But even that $35,000, that wouldn't add to it because you have to be at $42,000 before you start counting. So we didn't qualify for extraordinary relief. Although what that does do is for next year, our circuit breaker number, this year it was 1.4 million, next year it's going to be between 1.75 and 1.8 million dollars.
Assuming it's fully funded.
No, that's the projected, based on, fully funded would be 75%.
Yeah.
They're projecting right now 68, 69, so that's at that amount. It could, if they funded more, then we get a pickup.
So the 1.7, 1.8 is our reimbursement?
Correct.
So our expenses.
From this year's expenses.
So our expenses are like 2.4 or so.
Exactly. 2.5 almost.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I, question about working with Finance Director and the Town Manager on the final adjustment at town meeting? What would that, how would that work? Would that, would we on the floor modify something or?
Well, I've seen it before where they vote to make an adjustment to the current year budget.
Okay.
I think that's where it happens.
And I assume there are placeholder warrant articles and a warrant that would do that.
Yeah, and that's what we're working with for our ballot.
So in preparation for that conversation at town meeting, is it possible to prepare the, this was the budget we, we had approved, here were the special or unusual expenses that we uncovered?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to discuss which information we want to talk about, but I think I prepared this and this is, this is telling. If you look at, for the most part, these two are the same. It's our historical cost for out of district, how much we had in the operating budget and how much we got in circuit breaker, and then that total cost for out of district tuition. And you can see the percentages, percentage increases in this particular year, FY10, it had a big jump and then 4% and then we had a big drop. And then FY13, we recall both 13 and 14 having jumps. And so in FY15, based on the past, we had increased that by a significant amount, which was reasonable and responsible, but not nearly if you, as you look at this one, this one, in all cases are actual numbers and then what we had budgeted. And in the bottom one are all actuals and what we're projecting for this year and you can see 23.6, we've never seen that before.
And that's one year, that's 14 over 15.
That's from 14.
14 to 15.
From last year and this year.
Okay.
Yep. So I thought that was indicative of the situation.
So I can understand that, the, I get, so that's the sources of revenue that we use, right? Operating budget and circuit breaker.
And circuit breaker, right.
Not our expense line necessarily, but.
Well, it is in, when you're looking at the actuals, because that's where it came from and that's what was spent.
Right, right.
Yep.
I mean, we made whatever adjustments we needed to cover the expenses so that by definition represents the expense.
The final amount, right. Yep.
Okay.
That's pretty good. Is, Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Is the Town Manager also planning to use a similar approach that we might use at town meeting to cover the snow and ice shortfall? Is that?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the logistics. You could ask him that.
It's a possibility. He might be thinking about the same approach.
Whatever the mechanism is, I mean, that's an annual event.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other things on the horizon we need to be aware of as we close out the year?
It begs the question regarding next year and basically what we have in place in our budget is the same amount we've reached this year. So we, we would be able to sustain exactly what we have this year, but the benefit we have and where our kind of cushion or contingency comes in is that we have a lot of graduating and aging out students. So what will happen is you get that big drop and then if you get the addition, it's, it's covered. Obviously can never take a hit like we did this year, but we have a large number, an unusually large number of students who are graduating or aging out.
Okay. So with that and the additional reimbursement that we'll be getting from this year's exposure, we're comfortable with the budget we passed?
Exactly.
Several months ago?
Yep.
But, but I mean, even the student that just moved in, I mean, that's $175,000 next year.
Correct. Yep.
But it's replacing certain number of students who are aging out.
Right.
And I'm sure there's another house for sale, but.
And that's all good. I mean, we love to have our community growing, but.
I know that.
But if we are able to get the Special Ed Stabilization Fund at town meeting, this, you know, counting a paperclip starting September, hopefully it'll be mitigated.
I'll just say one more thing. It's important to have that stabilization fund as we can see from this year. The real goal, and I've said this before, but I'll repeat it, is to try to finish each year with a surplus that we can move into prepay and decrease our reliance on 100% of what we're receiving in circuit breaker. If we can do that over the next few years, then we'll be able to only budget some portion of circuit breaker and the rest of it will be our contingency for any given year.
Our own.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I know we had discussion on safe routes to school. Is there anything in particular you want to see? Just, I guess, I guess just.
Do we need to, can you zoom to that?
Yeah, well, it's the second reading.
Can you actually, I don't know if you can re, I don't know what the best way to orient that is. Maybe.
That is a good question.
Modify the size or something? I had a question on it that actually came from, can you rotate it? It's, well, it doesn't really.
Right.
It's a per se view.
Rotate.
Rotate view.
Yep.
It's actually cut off from where I was looking at anyway.
That's the full picture, yeah.
Yep. So obviously there's a safe, you know, there's a walkway that's kind of extending through the parking lot and then kind of back out, I forget the name of that street, is it Parker?
Parker.
Parker.
Yep.
Is there anything being done regarding walkway or pathway from like Atkinson and the ECC down?
No, not part of this project, no. This comes from, I said it loud, I think I said 114 last time, Mass Ave.
Yep.
All along Parker Street to that back entrance of the middle school and then this sidewalk continues right to the rear doors of middle school. That's the entire project.
Right.
And there are, there are other, besides sidewalk along Parker Street and at its connection to Mass Ave, there are traffic mitigation.
Right.
Efforts being made to slow down traffic, create, especially at Mass Ave, create a stop. So you have to square up at Mass Ave instead of how it, right now, you kind of just merge onto it.
Right. You cut across around Green Street.
Right, exactly.
They're going to, they're going to.
Key it up.
Can't do that peel off anymore after they're done.
Oh, okay.
It's a stop, turn right.
Right. And then there are other means to slow down traffic along Parker Street. So it'll be a much safer walk to school route for the neighborhood.
And they're, they're also going to put, I don't recall signals, but at least crosswalks there at Green Street where it, at Mass Ave. So there's going to be a whole, much more thorough.
Right, right. Yeah, the other part of that, not only does it slow down the cars, but it creates a safer crossing for pedestrians because right now that's, you know, there's not a very well-defined crosswalk and it's a long stretch to go with cars coming pretty quickly. So this will have shorter crosswalks, you know, an island in between.
So you can get across Mass Ave.
So it's a much easier, it's a much safer cross, right. Yep.
So the usual habit with. This as presented is that it sounds like there's going to be a pedestrian way in the middle of the parking lot that may cause confusion as cars are coming and going.
I think from last time, it was basically just how you graphed it out.
Right, that's not the.
It's not, it's really on the side.
Right. What we're talking about is it comes across at the back doors, it just crosses over and the sidewalk is right along at the end of the parking spaces that face the field, so.
Okay, so, okay, so it's not like, there's a walkway in the middle of the driveway.
It's not, no, at all, no. And it's sidewalk along that, at the end of the parking spaces and it continues on up. And then, and then there is a crosswalk that goes from the sidewalk across to the, the other sidewalk at the, the left end of that. And then that sidewalk continues to Parker Street to connect with the Parker Street sidewalk. So the only thing in will be the crosswalks, the short crosswalks.
Okay, I get that, I get that.
All right, well, if that's better than moving those parking spots out four feet so that you can have a walkway in front of the parking spots.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
And the easement just allows this to be permanently maintained as a, as a crosswalk, essentially? Is that right?
To, to actually install the sidewalk, to do the work necessary. They're getting easements from residents along Parker Street as well for the same purpose.
Okay. Does this have to be voted on at all at town meeting? Because of the street piece of it?
There's a warrant article that allows the town to acquire the necessary easements to do the project.
Okay.
But it's all, it's all funded, right?
Oh, yeah, it's state funded.
State funded.
Yep. What happened was, if people recall, we participated in the Safe Walks to School program by handing out flyers and other informational materials regarding the benefits of walking to school or riding your bike to school. And because we did that, we were eligible for a renovation project and we qualified and, and received this, this one. And what happened was there was a good sized group of people from different departments in the town and citizens who got together to choose which, which project would have the greatest impact for us. And this was one chosen.
Correct. Do you need a vote on this, Mr. Chairman?
We do, actually. We need a motion.
We could motion to approve the.
Grant the easement as presented in the packet.
Seconded?
Yes, seconded.
All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented by Mr. Terese?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Four to nothing.
Good.
All right. So we'll now move on to new business and the first item that we have is first reading of the school choi, I can't speak, school choice participation recommendation for 2015-2016. So we've had a hearing, a public hearing that was not very well attended, but open. And the administration has recommended that, again, we do not participate in being a receiving district for the 2015-2016.
a receiving district for the 2015, 2016 year.
Okay. No action required?
No action required. Any additional?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have 10B, which is first reading of proposed changes to policy FF, naming of new facilities and FFR, which is procedure for naming facilities. There's no action that is needed today, but a couple of quick things. The, there were some modifications that were presented, and so a couple of, the first one has some things that are kind of redlined for us in terms of changing facility and buildings and some updates with that. And then what happens, or what this states, was that there was a procedure to follow in, for that, but there wasn't actually a procedure, and so FFR is, in fact, that procedure, which is in the package, which is the next one that's there. So I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of background for that. So we will, I guess, open it up for some discussion.
I think the chairman knows my feelings on this. I just feel like this is, as it's presented right now, just more bureaucratic red tape that we don't need to go through. I think the school committee is elected by the public, and, you know, we should be making these decisions on behalf of the public. It's putting a lot of, you know, hurdles in place for something to happen. I think historically, the board of selectmen and school committee, whether it's municipal building or a municipal piece of property, and likewise, the school, you know, the school committee has, has done this without this kind of, I would say, just, and I do appreciate the chairman's efforts in this. I know he's been thinking about this since I know I got on the board back in, back in September. He's had a lot of, lot of input from, from different people on it, but within the day, I think that we're empowered to do so. We should do it. I think we all have, you know, pulse on what the community wishes and their desires. And I think, you know, we would take public input. We would listen to teachers, listen to parents, listen to principals. So I don't feel like we need to have this kind of very formal, very formal policy, which, to me, is fraught with, you know, pitfalls. I'm trying to find exactly where...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Are you referring more to FF or FFR?
I'm referring more to FFR.
Okay. I just want to, FF was really kind of more cleaning up of some language. That's why I just wanted to be...
Yeah, I mean, FF, you know, has been, has been there, and it's very, it's very general, you know? You know, and I can, I can appreciate that. When you get to FFR, it seems to me, you know, just, you know, having the 60 days, having a two-thirds vote, I mean, there, I just think it's, it's gonna be tough to implement, and I would oppose it.
Where did we get the FFR framework?
So the FFR framework was really based on conversations with Hutch and myself. And I can tell you, and he's not here, but, you know, he certainly, I believe he'll be here next meeting on the 6th, the Wednesday. You know, we, we talked about it. We didn't want it to be a knee-jerk reaction.
Yeah.
And we wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to know that something was coming, and that's why there was kind of the 60 days that was in there. If we were looking at naming something within a school, we wanted to make sure that the school was in agreement, or at least kind of in support of that, rather than just, you know, arbitrarily making decisions and naming, but, but really kind of involving some of that community in there as well. And I can certainly appreciate Mr. Terese's statements in terms of, you know, that we're elected to, to make the decisions and kind of put some of that out there. But I think this, a little bit of a waiting period was the intention, so that it wasn't just, hey, surprise, we're gonna rename something and not have people have an opportunity to hear it. So I'm more than happy, I mean, it's first reading, more than happy to, to make modifications, changes, kind of as we, we look at it.
Let me just sort of add my comment. I think this really helps address the point you raised, Mr. Terese. It's a way for us to get input from the community. So this is a way for us to solicit feelings of a broader group in a way that everybody understands and, you know, can participate in. And I, just speaking for myself, I haven't had a lot of input on, if we're talking about the specific issue of naming the track, from constituents, from teachers, I have not. So I have no idea what the community feeling is on this. I've heard a few individuals feel strongly about this, and several specific people have talked to me, but I haven't had any broad outreach to me about folks saying, you know, we think this is a great idea. So this, to me, seems like a very reasonable approach to try to name part of a facility. I'd have to go, I would have to ask somebody, historically, the last school, I'm guessing the last school that we named that had a name was Annual Sergeant. And we'd have to go back and sort of figure out how that was done. My, my vague recollection is there was a committee set up to do that, to choose that name, and there was a process they went through, and it was then presented to the school committee, yada, yada.
I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't have a public hearing, and specifically talking about the track. I mean, obviously, that's been, again, since I got on the board in September, people have approached me about it. If we were gonna go down that road, I would expect we would have a public hearing and have received formal comment in, in a real setting. I get a little concerned when we're empowering this many different levels. I call it bureaucracy, but, you know, this, there's, with, I'll do, I'll take, I'll take the principle of Franklin School, for example. He's brand new. You know, what kind of history or what kind of institutional knowledge of the community would he, would he have if there was something, if there was proposal to name something like the Franklin School? Likewise, I mean, there's a lot of times, you know, and I appreciate everyone who volunteers on PTOs and school councils, but sometimes the attendance is dismal at some of the, some of these PTOs. And have a, you need to have a two-thirds favorable vote from the faculty and the PTO. I, I think, you know, a lot of, some of these folks may not know who, the person who you're gonna name it, they would know that person. I just think that, again, we're the ones who are elected by the public. We should, you know, and any, any good public servant would, would listen to the public and take in input, take it in a public setting, but also, you know, we, we receive emails, we receive phone calls, and sometimes people only talk, and we need to formulate a judgment. And that's, that's, I think, what we're, we're elected to do. So I, I would be strongly against having this kind of level of, of involvement when it comes to faculties and PTOs. I think, you know, informally or in a setting like this, to come and testify in front of us, but to mandate that you have to have these levels of approval before it gets to this board is something that I oppose.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm sorry, please.
I was just gonna, I just wanted a little bit of point of clarification for something that Mr. Limpert said and Mr. Terese. When the sergeant was actually, and I, we had the minutes, and I thought that I sent them out, but if I didn't, I apologize. When we had the hearing to name the sergeant school back in, I'm gonna guess, it was pre-construction, so I'm gonna say early 90s, there were like a half a dozen, if not more, names presented in terms of who to name it after, and it kind of, kind of went through a number of iterations in that. So it may be helpful for you guys to just take a look at what, what the conversation was about that. And I think that, that kind of ties back a little bit to Mr. Terese's point, was that there wasn't a vote of the faculty. At that point, there wouldn't have been a faculty of the school for that, but it would have been a new facility. But there wasn't that kind of piece of that. People just came, it was an open forum. I think, you know, there was at least a half a dozen people who got up and spoke regarding individuals that they recommended it be named after, or I think there was actually one that was a geographical name. I don't remember exactly what it was, but something about the town that they, they, instead of having a name, it would have been more place-oriented. So that may be helpful with that. I think, you know, if, if we were looking at something with the Franklin School, for example, and we had Mr. Clark, who's a new principal that's there, he certainly wouldn't have that historical knowledge that there, that is contained within that school, but that's where the faculty and the PTO would. And so that was just a little bit of the rationale behind that. I don't know if that makes sense, and I appreciate what you're saying, but that was kind of, we were, we were thinking if the principal didn't necessarily have that historical, then the faculty did. Is that...
I hear what you're saying, and I, I know you, I just think that it would be smart for us as elected members to listen to the faculty, to listen to the PTOs. And I know personally, I would do that. I would, I would, I would take that in. But my fear is, when you get this, this strict about naming stuff, it becomes a little ominous, you know? I think that, you know, if there's a certain situation, you know, of, you know, whether it's an individual or a family who has an idea about naming something after somebody, and they see this kind of process they need to go through, it may be, you know, a little intimidating. I think that, you know, and I just know what I've heard about when we've named the Walsh Field and, you know, the Crozier, Crozier Fieldhouse, and, you know, they just, they listen to people, and they, they talk to people. I don't know if it was a real formal kind of have these different levels of approval till it got to us.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If in, for example, and I'm, right now, I can only see existing facilities on my screen, but in the second piece, it says, "The principal will present any suggestions to the staff and representative PTO." And then the second sentence is, "The naming recommendation must have two-thirds favorable vote of the faculty and the representative PTO." If that second sentence was removed, do you think that that would...
Or, or some sentences that provides a way for the faculty to provide some feedback, but take out the stuff like must and two-thirds and that.
The must in the approvals are difficult for me, because, I mean, let's, a lot of times, you know, getting two-thirds vote, I mean, is it two-thirds president voting or is it two-thirds of the faculty in general?
I guess I'm, I'm okay thinking about how to, as long as we've solicited the input, right, from faculty and PTO.
I'd agree with the opportunities.
And I would, Jim, could you go up to the previous section?
Mm-hmm.
And provide some clarification of, are we gonna have a public, you know, how's that gonna work? It's, to me, item three there, is that the one, it seems a little, if we're gonna use some similar kinds of a process, if now the bottom part for an existing facility is more like recommendations, then we need a process that's like the process above for naming a whole school, where we say, okay, we're gonna have a public hearing specific to this, and people can come, they can make their suggestions and present their case. I'm just saying, we, we might want to add something down in the lower section for the...
Okay.
You know, that mirrors what's up above. And then modify the language so it's not so dogmatic, you know, it's like must and two-thirds.
Yeah, no, I, I see exactly what I'm, I'm hearing from everybody.
Well, let me, let the mic two cents in if I could. I, as I've seen in the past, the lack of process is a problem for these types of organizations. I think this forces getting public participation. And while I agree that the last statement of every process ends with, and then the school committee will vote, gives Mr. Terese exactly what he's saying, which is you have the responsibility to vote on this issue. What I, I agree also that the, the steps in between could be thinned a little and maybe lightened, but I am in full support of providing the, the required framework, so this doesn't turn into a, an unvetted opportunity that we do something that is permanent, and now we have other issues that, when schools and schools disappear, what happens?
And, you know, speaking for the bureaucracy, on behalf of the bureaucracy...
On behalf of the bureaucracy.
Some of what we do with, with rules and procedures and policies and laws is to provide some braking, some inertia, so that we don't just rush into things all the time when somebody shows up and says, we want to name this that. We go, okay, let's name it. We don't care.
Does that happen?
Well, it doesn't happen often, but it, when it starts to happen, it makes me nervous, right?
Well, the last time I think it really happened was with the naming of the ECC, and that was eight years ago.
Yeah.
The EC6?
Early childhood center.
Who's that name?
No, wasn't named, but that, but that's a little bit of the point, because they're, they, they didn't decide on any name. I mean, but, and so it was kind of what do they come up with for a name? And so rather than any of the people that I think, you know, our town has that we could be proud of and recognize with that, we didn't do that. We, we just gave it someone of a more generic name. And I think perhaps if it had gone through, and I wasn't on the board at that time, and to be honest, was newer to town, probably wasn't paying that much attention at that point, but I think if it had gone through and there was, you know, more input or something, perhaps it would have ended up with a name to recognize somebody who contributed to children or the town or...
It might be the Brad Street Early Childhood Center. We don't know.
So how would you envision, Mr. Chairman, if, if we adopt this policy and we want to name the track after somebody? So you're saying that we make an announcement that we're gonna name the track after somebody, and then within 60 days, people will give suggestions to the superintendent?
It would, so in this case, because it's an existing, we would, I would say at this point, for something to be dedicated or named for somebody, that would be presented to the principal. And then the principal, I'm thinking, sorry.
The principal would have to convene a group.
But I would suggest that, that, that is not just the domain of the high school principal. Specifically, I mean, everyone from town uses that. People walk on the track. People do, a lot of people who aren't related to that school principal should have a say in that. And if it's, the kibosh is put on it at that lower level, then it never gets to us.
So if it went to the superintendent?
But I, let me go back and sort of see if I can pick up on Mr. Terese's earlier point. So if we, the school committee, are gonna ultimately make the decision, we're gonna choose to name something or not.
Sure.
We would have three inputs. One would be a public hearing, where anybody could come and provide their input and rationale for whatever their input is. The faculty, and we could do that in several different ways. We could convene a public hearing, get whatever input we get from that, names. That could be given to the faculty and say, here's some suggestions, and get their feedback. That's it, you know? And same with the PTO. And then we, the school committee, would use all that information and make a decision.
So I just was thinking, I mean, what if, and I can take a stab at rewriting it and shoot it over to people to take a look at, but what if it went to the chair of the school committee? Because then it's not necessarily the principal, it's not necessarily the superintendent. And they, we then did our 60-day announcement and allowed...
Somewhere in there, I think there needs to be a formal request from the public per Mr. Terese's input, so the public can come to us and say, here's some suggestions we have and here's why.
Okay.
So somewhere in there, there needs to be a public hearing, you know, more than just the, you could show up at one of our meetings and give us some suggestions. I think we ought to let people know, we're gonna have a...
That's actually more closed.
Yeah, a specific part of a meeting where we're gonna request inputs on this subject. The subject is whatever it is, naming the track. And then it could be, we could either do a sequential series of events, which is based on the results of that, you could take that information and pass it on to the school faculty, whatever school that happens to be, and the PTO, and get their feedback to us on that.
Okay.
And that would be all information that we, the school committee, would use to make the decision about naming or not naming the facility. So per Mr. Terese's point, we're trying to solicit the maximum amount of input from all stakeholders who would be affected by this decision.
So without, without force of argument. The overarching, overarching point that I'd like to make is I think we would do that with or without the process, but I understand you want to formalize it. I want to make sure that the only people that are gonna actually make the decision, though, is this, is this board. And if the fa, I mean, I don't think this is gonna happen, but, you know, if, you know, there's a couple, a couple faculty members that don't want something to happen, you know, they could probably, you know, work a meeting and, but that should not prevent us from ever voting on it. You know, I don't think we should have this, again, and I think you talked about taking it out, I don't think we should have this must receive a favorable vote at, at any other level, because these people... vote at any other level, because these people, any of these folks have...
All right. So can I, I'm going to try to paraphrase a little bit of what I'm hearing. So someone from the public could come and present it at a school committee meeting, the request to name a field, a building, or whatever, and then if the school committee, and I'm just thinking through, then decides that that is something that they would look at, then we would open a 60-day period where we would solicit feedback from the school and the community.
Okay. And now I'm channeling Mr. Teresi, slippery slope, right? We don't want to, we don't want to have anybody be able to come and say, "I decided I wanted to have you name the Franklin Playground for my dead uncle." You know, we don't want to have a bunch of these 60-day things queued up. The starting point might be, sort of echoing Mr. Teresi here, we've heard from the community already that there's an interest in naming a facility, right? And that would, we would start, we would start the process, right? We wouldn't wait for people to, but, I mean, that would be as a result of people having come to some of us and said, "We think we ought to do something about this individual in that facility." But we would start the process. It wouldn't be unsolicited, somebody comes up and says, "I want to name the Thompson Playground, the Thompson Auditorium for X," because that could just be an interminable amount of us going, "No, we're not going to do that, and we don't want to get into that." But again, Mr. Gross, it's good to have a process, right? It's good to have a process that we go through and make sure that we collect, solicit input. To Mr. Teresi's point, it's not binding input, it's just making sure we do it.
So do you want recommendations or proposals?
I'm trying to think.
Or do you want to take a stab on your own?
Why don't we, why don't, if we have some suggestion on this, why don't we send them to you and you think about it?
Okay.
Some wording on this bottom part, and think about what that might look like, and then we'll try it again prior to our next meeting.
So can I take a quick pulse check of the committee in a non-binding vote here? Because this is a first reading. Policy FF, the first one, which is the naming of school facilities, I think I'm hearing that most people are okay with those changes, we're really just worried about FFR, correct?
They're both the same title. That's naming school facilities and naming of school, are they going to the same title?
Well, it's, one is the policy, that's FFR.
That's a procedure.
Procedure, sorry, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, that's the procedure.
Yeah.
So the title could be Procedure Four.
Procedure, okay. But that would be FFR.
But your answer is yes. I don't see any major issue with the proposed changes to FF.
Okay.
At least from my perspective.
Right, and I'm the same. So my straw vote is yes on FF.
Mr. Teresi, FF?
Yeah, I think it's general enough that, you know, I can support that. I mean, obviously we're not voting on it until either next week or the week after that, but I'll take it. You're heading in the right direction.
Okay. So in FFR, the first section, which is new facilities, which unless Mr. Mailer has a big bag of money and we're building a school someday very soon, I don't think that we're necessarily on the hook for this immediately, but is there anything in that that you want me to focus on, or we're really just looking at existing facilities, which is the second piece?
Well, I'm not sure why there should be a difference myself, but just take the early childhood center. Is that a new or existing facility now?
Now it's existing.
Now it's existing.
Now it's existing.
When it's become, we're going to move to the administration building sometime in July, right? And that's a new facility. When it's become an existing facility? The day after?
The day after.
I mean, I just don't know how you differentiate. I think you could, again, I need to give it a little more thought, and I want to, you know, pigeonhole you on this, but I think the same process should really take place for both.
Well, I think the intent and the process that we kind of went through was really thinking of facilities as a bigger piece, right? We're not talking a, the auditorium of a building or a, you know, a gym within that.
I'm sorry to cut you off. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Maybe we just specifically spell out the naming of new school buildings, because I do believe that is a much higher level of scrutiny and deserves a lot more time and reflection by the entire community. I'm not sure, you know, how it transpired in 1993 with the Sargent School, but, you know, that I would think, and same with the ECC, you know, even though it's an existing facility, I would think that that should rise to the level, a higher level of scrutiny and public engagement.
New school facilities or?
I'd say buildings.
New building?
I mean, specific buildings. I mean, that's my take on it. I think when you're naming a field, an auditorium, an area, a gymnasium, whatever, it's, they're very important, and it's important to the person who you're moralizing, but I think that the school buildings, we talk about them in every day, you know, so.
And I think you, Mr. McDavid, raised a point earlier, which is, with a new building, there is no faculty, there, you know, there is no PTO, there's no constituents of that type for a new building, just starting from scratch. With an existing facility, there's another set of stakeholders that will be affected by whatever you do. But to Mr. Teresi's point, when you, when we have a new, a new building, a new school, it affects the whole community, and that's where we really have to engage the entire community to make sure we're getting all the input from them on how that goes. So maybe just some word changes here would help, you know, new buildings versus existing facilities.
Okay. I'm going to play devil's advocate on this, but is the Kittredge Gym a new building?
I would say that's an addition.
That's an addition, okay. I'm just, I'm not going to be a wordsmither, but I'm just trying to...
I mean, you could, it would fall under the existing facilities if you wanted to name the gym after somebody.
If you want to be real specific, can you say additions to existing facilities would be under existing facilities? But I think standalone buildings, I mean, we're not, I don't think we're building anything in the near future, but I mean, if there's a movement at some point to name the ECC, or to name the school administration building for that matter, that, in my opinion, should have a higher level of scrutiny.
Okay.
Let me just ask a hypothetical question. Is that a, once we move in, is that a school building or still a town building?
My understanding is it becomes a school building. I mean, we're responsible for it, once it's paid, once it's opened.
I love that expression. It's my understanding.
So we're going to name it?
That's not, it's not planned. There have been no suggestions.
Well, honestly, it brings up an interesting point, because it's an existing, well, I guess it could be considered new or existing, and there could be a name associated to it. Right now, it's just called Administration, right?
Right, right. It will say School Administration on the sign.
Are we all there?
Yet. But I mean, just consistent with what you're talking about here, there's been no push for any name. There's been no request to name it.
Nobody's pushed for that.
Well, it starts, I think whenever you have a name request, it starts at a very small, you know, local level, and it germinates with some discussion. I mean, I think the feedback that I'm hearing about the high school track has that kind of feel to it. And I think if we did put something, you know, on the agenda and it was publicized in the newspaper, we'd generate even more interest and even more comment. But you're right, I'm not hearing to name it after, I'm not going to bring that name up. But anyways.
Maybe we should move on and...
Yeah, all right. So I will, I will make a couple of changes and then shoot that over to you guys. I'll get that in Word and then modify that quickly. All right. So revolving account, anything additional? I think we're, we've talked it to death. We were way ahead on the agenda and that just put us, yeah, now we're almost behind.
But no, but I think that was...
It was good conversation. So 10C, reading of the fiscal year 16 revolving accounts.
Do we have any suggestions? Will you do food service first?
I'm going to just work my way right into introducing Erica. It's not going to take long. Each year, we present the revolving accounts to the school committee for approval separate from the operating budget. They don't change much from one year to the next. We are not requesting any fee increases in any of our revolving accounts. The small adjustments you see are based on projected revenue, because these are, you can only spend as much as you generate in revenue in these accounts. So for instance, athletics, we had projected $335,000 in revenue for FY15, and it looks like it'll be a little bit less than that in FY16, not a lot, but that's why you see a small reduction in that budget. Transportation is pretty much the same. Preschool, we were anticipating, and where you're seeing revenue impacted, and it affects Ericas differently, food services actually benefits from free and reduced being higher, because they get a reimbursement, federal reimbursement, for each student that qualifies and each meal that is served. But the other revolving accounts are revenue-wise negatively impacted, because there's no reimbursement. If a student qualifies, then that's revenue they're not getting. They get to participate, but they're not paying. So you see that with preschool, as our numbers go up in free and reduced, preschool revenue goes down, community programs goes down. Now, what's happened with community programs, just spend a small amount of time on that. The fees went up last year, if you recall, because we were in the last year, this year, of our debt payment.
Right.
The community programs helped fund the construction of the modular classrooms at the Kittredge Elementary School. So they're, by law, obligated to have to utilize the space while that debt is being paid back. So as of the end of this year, the last payment is made, and they can now be moved, and that space could be used as a classroom, we are seriously, we've been able to put people in different places in the new admin building that free up the corner office, which is a good-sized office, at the back entrance, which would be perfect for community programs, and frankly, the space is desperately needed at Kittredge. So the fact that the free and reduced has increased has impacted community programs, so that increase, while the debt's going away, Rick Alanti has recommended that we maintain the race right where they are. We haven't had complaints about them, and they still are lower than surrounding communities. So we're recommending that stays where it is. And the rest are small revolving accounts, custodial overtime. We collect for the events that take place and then pay out for that overtime. Rental fees are the same, middle school, after-school programs. The one that we always use this opportunity to get you up to speed, so to speak, on is food services. We always have Erica come in at this time to present, let you know what's going on with food services. She's the one with the most moving parts. She does as good a job as I've seen for a director of food services. And so with that, I'd like to ask Erica to come up and give her presentation.
Can I ask you a quick question? There's no, like, treats this time?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
So, it's all yours.
All right. So this year, FY15 is the third year of the inception of the new school USDA guidelines. I provided a few slides just to remind you about some of this key legislation that went into effect FY13. The first piece is the National School Lunch Act had become amended. All of the meals that we serve must now be, must reflect the dietary guidelines. The second piece is the creation of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, and this regulation is based on recommendations from the Institute of Medicine. So everything has become very scientific in school lunch. What is the significance of this rule? School meal programs impact millions of children every day. North Andover services approximately 2,000 meals a day, just in lunches, and probably about 1,000 more in à la carte sales. So we're doing about 3,000 meals a day, 2,000 of which are reimbursable. Obesity and food insecurity, hunger are dual threats to many of these children, and the rule establishes new standards in aligning meals with the latest in nutrition science. So what are the changes that came into effect? How is it different from what we were doing prior to FY13? FY13, we could put together a meal that had any food product on it in any amount. Now they're getting more specific. We now have to offer fruit daily, vegetable subgroups, different fruits each day of the week. Half of the grains offered need to be whole-rich, and there are grain ranges. We have to offer meat and meat alternatives weekly. The milk we serve is now fat-free or low-fat, and we've also established caloric ranges by age groups, so different calories for different age groups. So your elementary school students are not getting the same portion sizes as your middle school and your high school students. Each meal may not exceed these limits, and it can become extremely challenging trying to meet these guidelines and meet the caloric ranges with the foods that we have available. So how have these regulations affected our program? Again, we started the new regulations in FY13. We introduced the new guidelines. Half of the grains offered were whole-rich. There were calorie restrictions. The reimbursable meals had to contain either a fruit or a vegetable for it to be considered reimbursable. And we now had to perform nutrition analysis on every meal served. So it had to make sure within a computer system that the meal met the guidelines. Total revenue for this year, the first year, was $505,000. This did not include our reimbursement. This was just actual sales between the meals and the à la cartes. In one year, we went from offering any food to regulated meals. Our program unfortunately lost $246,000 the first year. So moving into year two, we're starting to recover from a $246,000 loss. Maintain the same regs as we had for FY13, but now breakfast is regulated. It's not just the lunches. The breakfast meals all have to fall within certain guidelines as well. We continue to introduce new foods and regulated portions to the established age groups. We were able to increase the revolving account by approximately 10,000 by the end of this year, regardless of the new regs. So that was a feat within itself to go from a $246,000 loss to a $10,000 gain in the next fiscal year.
What Eric is not saying is that that was because of her diligence in the expense side of things. She was able to drastically reduce expenses through a lot of effort, you know, taking part in the federal, what's it called? The, yeah.
The commodity program.
The commodity program, thank you.
Utilizing as many commodities available to us that we get from the government on a monthly basis, and just getting creative with the foods that they offer, and surveys and taste tests, and giving the kids an opportunity to try things before they buy them.
Can I ask you a quick question, just because you mentioned the breakfast program and the regulations that are there? That's not the Kid Stop, when the kids go to Kid Stop and they get breakfast there, that does not fall under these guidelines?
That is correct.
And that's because of the, it's the 30 minutes before school. Is that correct? Okay. I've had a number of people ask all the time, like, why can they serve this? And I just...
We encourage them at Kid Stop to follow our guidelines. I don't know for sure exactly what they serve. They do piggyback our bid and buy some food products from us, so I'm assuming they're getting a lot of whole grain products and things of that sort.
I thought it was the 30-minute rule.
It is.
Okay.
But again, we still encourage them. Okay, so now we're on this fiscal year. Now all of the grains are whole-grain rich, and we now have sodium targets, so all meals must fall within a certain range of sodium. Students begin to realize that each new school year brings stricter guidelines, in turn decreases our participation from FY14 to turn decreases our participation from FY14 to FY15. Sports drinks are no longer allowed, only water, naturally-flavored water, and 100% fruit juice, and only an eight-ounce serving. So, kids at the high school who are getting 20-ounce sports drinks are now only allowed to get an eight-ounce apple juice. So, there's been a little pushback in that regard. À la carte foods that meet these specific guidelines is difficult to procure. Manufacturers are still working to reduce items that can be available to our programs. I believe that the students didn't think that these regulations would stick. I think they thought, you know, year one, year two, that maybe there'd be some more leniency. And it wasn't until April 8th of this year that we just received notice from the DOE that they have pushed back on the whole grain. So, the pizzas, the subs, and things like that can go back so long as we are still incorporating as much as the whole-grain component as we can. So, for the remainder of this year and for next fiscal year, so they're hoping it will help boost participation and help on that.
Do you know what the percent change you're reflecting is?
Percent change of what?
Where am I on that?
Well, Jim, do you know what?
It's the total to the previous year's total?
Yes, previous year.
To the previous year?
Yes.
So, the total went up 3%, 13 to 14, and went down, no, it can't be.
No. Isn't that right?
Well, not if that's the case. I mean, we have a total in year three of 158. Oh, the total in, I see. That should be 178 and 168.
For the increases?
And 237 possibly. We'll have to check these numbers.
If you could maybe send the amended version?
Yep.
Because it does look like we lost 12% in year three. It looks like we gained up 100%.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, we'll check them.
I'll look it up. Sorry about that. So, what are our solutions? How do we boost participation and increase our bottom line? We hope that more product becomes available annually that meet the guidelines. Manufacturers are working to produce products that students want and in the appropriate portion sizes. Statistics throughout the state are shared with legislation annually, with the hope that they will ease back on some of these regulations. And as I just mentioned, there is a waiver for whole grain. We are hoping that there may be some more leniency in some of the other components that we need to offer. And as always, we will reevaluate staffing to meet the school's current needs. We are required now with these new guidelines to participate in a comprehensive program audit. FY14 was the first year that the DOE did these audits, and North Andover was one of the first in the state to have this extensive audit. We successfully completed it in both the financial management piece as well as the program compliance piece. The Department of Education sent notification to HUTCH that all areas of the review had been approved. So, in summary, our district, we understand the new guidelines. We've complied with and are administering them, both the USDA and DOE expectations.
But just going back to the work that Erica did, a lot of school districts, because of the changes in the nutrition guidelines, went into the red.
Yeah.
They used up any, you know, surplus funds they had and went into the red. And when that happens, the general fund has to, right, exactly, has to get it back to zero, so to speak. So, she's done an excellent job.
I remember before the regulations took effect, having the discussion about what's going to be the impact, and, you know, the concerns of just that point. You know, you assured us that, you know, that we have a plan to deal with that, and, you know, evidence of just that happening. So, yes, thank you very much.
So, Ms. Murphy, just remind me now, I'm pretty sure this is true, but you could just say yes or no. If we decided to not use the guidelines and just do whatever we wanted to do, we would lose the ability to buy under the government programs we used to get?
We wouldn't allow them to receive their income on these.
Right.
Nor would we receive a reimbursement. And we receive about $400,000 a year in reimbursements. So, we would have to increase our prices to offset that loss.
So, our revenue would be severely impacted, as they say.
It would.
Right, right. We actually considered that scenario and ran the numbers, and you've got two factors. One being that prices would have to go up substantially, and two, now you're not offering nutritional food at your schools.
Right.
Right, right, right. No, I just, I think, that was my recollection from your presentation a couple of years ago when we went through this, when you started, and we're struggling.
Right.
But I'm very impressed about how well you've done it. This is great.
I did want to provide you a sample of what a typical reimbursable lunch looks like. There has been skepticism as to portion sizes, and it doesn't look good. I mean, this particular meal is grilled cheese on a whole-grain, on whole-grain bread with spinach and cranberry salad and fresh pears and milk. And I think it looks great. It's colorful, it's appetizing, and it's nutritious. So, I think the kids, you know, they're still getting used to seeing spinach on their trays instead of tossed salad, but you'd be surprised at how many of them are eating it now, now that we're in our third year. So, and one thing I also wanted to point out is when the guidelines were introduced, it was with the hope that they were going to introduce healthy eating to all the students. However, it was understood that these regulations would have the biggest impact on our younger students. They teach the kids young, and they'll continue to make healthy choices as they grow. Since the guidelines' inception in FY13, we've had a steady increase in sales of both meals served and à la carte sales at the elementary school level. So, in short, these guidelines set out to accomplish have proven successful within the North Andover School Lunch Program, the elementary level. Another area of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act is we must determine annually if our paid meals need to be adjusted each year. And the DOE publishes a required selling price, and the required selling price for next school year is $2.70. Our weighted average with all of the meals that we service throughout the district, all levels, is $2.84. So, we now have a 14-cent difference that we can use to carry over to be used in future school years. So, we don't anticipate having to increase prices anytime soon. So, I think that's a win-win. And we do still try to get in as much staff development as possible. This year has been somewhat of a struggle. We always use curriculum days. We brought in lecturers and things like that. We met as a group. So, it's been a little bit difficult this year. We haven't been able to all do it together. We're piecemealing it, but we're still getting it done. So, we are attending annual food shows, area conferences. We're networking with other school districts, finding out what's working for them, and trying to incorporate it in our district. And I'm also going to a Healthy Kids, Healthy Programs Summit, it's new this year, at the end of this month. So, it's an opportunity to network with other districts to really see what's going on in the other schools. Meal magic continues to be an amazing tool that we use in our program. It provides several suites within one software program. We utilize it as a point-of-sale, nutrition analysis, and free and reduced application. If you recall, when we were discussing some of our options in this regard, there are many programs out there, but they do just one thing. And we were able to secure this at a much less price, and it included all three of these options. And we have been working with the town IT to get the online payment up and running, and we should have it up and running in the next few weeks.
Excellent. So, they can now put money into a student's budget or account?
Correct. Yep, and it should be there within seconds.
But we can do that now.
Through MCC. You can't do it online.
You can't do it online.
You cannot do it.
You have to send it in.
You have to send it in either by check or mail it in.
You can do it for other programs.
Yes.
Okay. All right, that may be what I'm thinking. I know we don't do that, but I remember that...
We thought maybe we could use that same system, but it wouldn't work with the point-of-sale system.
Okay. Will we lose any money with transaction fees?
No. It's a parent pays the transaction.
If they want to use the program.
If they want to use it.
We pass the...
Pass it on to the parent.
Okay.
Right.
If they auto-debit, there's no transaction.
What's great about it is it's a $2 transaction. You can have four kids, and you still charge that one $2 transaction.
Well, I'm sorry, is that if you're putting it on credit card, or is that the transaction fee regardless whether you're auto-debit?
On credit, no, it's not your rate on the credit card, but as far as if you want to make a deposit into four students' accounts from that one source of payment from you, it's only $2.
All right, so maybe I'm misunderstanding. The current municipal system, if you auto-debit to an existing checking or savings account, there's no transaction fee. If you debit through a credit card, you pay a 3%.
3%.
Is this a different system, and are we charging a surcharge for them to use this? Or is it the same?
Right, no. When we tie into MCC, the variables will be the same for adding the money to the account through MCC as they are right now.
So, is...
So, a credit card will be a 3% fee. You'll still have that option of automatic debit, and an electronic check, I think, might be 25 cents.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you. So, there is a fee-free way?
Right.
To transfer funds to the district to pay for your kids' school lunch?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. In January, Channel 5 News did a segment on the best foods in Massachusetts public schools. North Andover scored number eight. The information was provided from the DOE. A high ranking indicates the district offers a variety of healthy, quality food options, accommodates various dietary preferences like vegan and gluten-free, and the students rate the quality of food favorably. So, there has been so much negativity associated with the new guidelines, and it was nice to see something positive for, you know, showing our efforts. And lastly is my budget. I anticipate to begin next school year with a balance of $53,000, adding another $23.5 to that and ending the FY16 with a positive balance of $76.5. We are making slow strides now, but we are happy to report that the strides we are moving in are in the right direction.
Ms. Murphy, I think what indicates that you're doing well is last year, when our students would report here at school committee meeting, from time to time, food was a topic.
It was.
It has not been a topic at all this year. So, I think you're making progress, at least at the high school level.
There you go.
Haven't had any feedback at all on food.
I think that might have been just Nixon caught of being hungry.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's hard to ask a wrestler about his food. Yeah, they sort of have a food fetish.
There is one statistic that might be interesting. One of the concerns when we changed the portion size was that students would buy two lunches or a lunch and à la carte. Do we have a feel for that? Are they enjoying the benefit of the serving size, or are we not getting that benefit?
I think they are enjoying the size of the meals that they're getting. We have very few second meals out at the elementary schools, and when we do, we have to have parent permission to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
So, I don't remember when we started being able to access that kind of online payment rather than having to send in whatever it is, $2.50 or $2.75 a day. Have we noticed, and it may be in part because we've changed regulations, but have we noticed that being able to prepay for those meals is adding to more, an increase in purchases? Or is it...
Well, again, we can set restrictions. So, in particular, at the elementary level, we do offer one snack a day. So, one parent may say, I don't want you to purchase a snack five days a week, but if the money is there, the parent has to set a weekly restriction so that, you know, he can purchase five meals, but only three snacks for that week. And discussions need to be had around the dinner table about how to make those choices and purchases.
I just didn't know if that made it easier for more students to purchase the lunch, and if we noticed volume as well as the, I don't want to say the quality, but the options and the getting familiar with some of the variety that's there?
Yes.
If it's kind of taking off in the right trajectory.
Each year, our point-of-sale enrollment increases because of the ease. So, I would say we're at about 70%, 75%.
That high?
Yep.
Wow, that's awesome.
Yep.
Hopefully, the new program will make that even...
Yes, increase it even more.
Easier, too. So, that's great.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The constant fight in our house is that they can only buy one day.
Oh, really?
So, it's got to be good if they want to forego mom's packing. So, thank you.
Before we move on, I just have one question. Community programs, the money, Kittredge, Jim, that's basically the rent they've been paying for the...
Marginal broker and marginal classes, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. That's the, they're like paying rent for that facility. Is that their way of reimbursing us, if you will?
I don't know if I would say it that way. They helped fund that project, and the only way they could is if they were going to reside there. And so, they're finishing that obligation.
This year.
This year, yep.
On the same area, in the community programs, have we changed the staffing, or will there be staffing changes, or are we just seeing a shift in the salaries?
Yeah, he's adding programming.
Okay.
So, you're seeing some additional staffing. In the other part, we talked about, if you recall, not only the impact of the free and reduced, but also the need for additional paraprofessionals for the services to be provided.
Right, and that's being represented in the 2015?
Correct.
Okay, that applies. Good, thank you.
Mr. Minna, what's the $6,000 in the extra stipends? What's that for? Yeah, sometimes we don't even get that. It's a revolving account that exists, and I don't know if I've ever seen anything come out of it. Some, apparently in the past, there has been a check received by the school district for special education purposes, almost like a donation. But we carry it forward each year, but hardly ever does, have I seen anything come out of it. So, we have it in place in case we receive it again.
So, $6,000 sitting in right now?
No, no. If we got money, we could spend it up to $6,000.
Oh, okay.
But, and if we got more than that, we'd have to come to the school committee and ask for an increase in the budget to spend more.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. So, I don't think that there's a, it's a first reading, but it recommends approving, but I don't know if we need to do that today. Do we need to do that today?
No, we don't. The revolving account?
Yeah.
No, we're not going to be approved at the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, it is first reading, but the recommended action said to approve it, but...
There's nothing that forces us to do that today.
Well, you're right. It's, this is the one we're recommending.
Okay.
Did they all read that way for a first reading?
Okay.
That's the outcome we're looking for.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Did you have another question? Okay. So, 10D, which is the first reading of the proposed domestic policy leave. So, I just want to quickly summarize this for those who may not have it in the packet. But we got this. There was a state law that was passed, I believe, in the fall of this year, and then the Massachusetts School Association provided districts with basically a sample policy. And what this allows for is for employees to take up to 15 days of leave if they are in a domestic situation where they need to take some care of that. They need to be either the victim of that domestic abuse or be assisting somebody who is needing attention in a domestic environment. It cannot be for the perpetrator of that. The other thing is that they have to have exhausted all of their leave within the contract that they have. So, their vacation time, if they have any, their sick, and their personal time as well. So, once they have kind of reached the end of that, this is, at the discretion of the superintendent, an additional 15 days.
It's up to 15 days.
Up to 15 days, thank you.
So, this, from what you said, so this technically would be the domestic violence victim leave policy, right?
Yes.
Technical.
I don't know if we wanted to add the word victim in there, but yes, you are correct. Any...
This is the model language from M.A.S.C.?
Correct.
We've made any changes, or...
None that I know of. We can check. Anything?
I'm good.
All right. So, we will jump down to the CREST fiscal year 16 budget, which is informational. And this has to do with CREST, which is the, I can't speak. So, we will jump down to the CREST fiscal year 16 budget, which is informational. And this has to do with CREST, which is the, I can't speak, Collaborative for Regional Educational Services and Training. We currently send about 45 kids?
No, no, no. We, yeah, we send less than 10 as far as out of district, but they also have other programs--
Okay.
--that we may participate in.
Okay, that may be where I'm thinking of the, that number.
Yep.
So, this is just informational from them regarding--
Right.
--what their current status is. And I know, Mr. Lempert, you in the past have attended their board meetings. I don't know if, I think the last time you did present on that, but I don't know if there's anything different here from--
There really isn't. The only thing I would add is what I've said in the past, which is, in the past two or three years, they've gotten a whole new management team in there, and they're, it's just, they're doing an excellent job, very well-run now. As a matter of fact, they've outgrown their current facility and are in the process of moving to a new facility, which they'll be doing this summer. So, they're, they're really, things are really going well for them. They're really trying to expand their service offerings, and they're going to be, we'll be coming back with a modification to the collaborative agreement because we need to, all the members of the collaborative need to vote to add members, and they, two more districts want to join. Draken and Triton want to join the collaborative, so we're going to have to vote on that. And there's also going to be some minor language changes for the period from the time the, a new district gets tentative approval to join, to the time they become an official member, there's a partial reduction in the fees they pay once they've come on board but haven't become full members. So, there's a little bit of a language change for that, too. But basically, it's, I think that sort of indicates the success they're having, that now districts want to join and use their services. So, I think they're just doing great. I'm very impressed with what's going on there, so.
I think we actually have that on the agenda for next meeting--
Yeah.
--to, for Draken and Triton.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other issues or comments on the CREST?
I guess one question I would have is, do we have the facilities to host any of these programs that might bring revenue to this town?
We--
That's a loaded question, right?
Yeah, well, let me say, we used to host a program here. We'd get revenue from it, and they're a pretty good payer. But we decided that we had, no longer could make that space available, and so we turned down there. We terminated the agreement. If we had space available, which we, I don't believe we do, but if we did, that would be a good thing to do, you know, we're stuffed enough for a space as it is. And they, typically, they need a fair amount. It's not just a single classroom, or, you know, it's some amount of space to have, to make it worth their while to move a whole program in to a facility. They're always looking for space, undeniable, but I don't think we have enough any place in our facility to do that, you know? Certainly not the elementary schools, definitely not at the middle school, definitely not, and probably not at the high school. I mean, I don't think we have enough free space, you know? And it'd mean just squeezing everybody into the purpose of making a little money.
Yeah, our bubbles don't make the situation any better, but--
No.
Yeah.
Something to think about.
Yep. All right. Any, well, there is no public, but, so we'll open it for a public comment and comment from the school committee. Mr. Theresa? Ms. Lempert?
The robotics team did well in Kentucky. They didn't win any awards, but they, I think, deported themselves well. They came in about the middle of the pack. It was a good showing, good learning experience, good educational experience, and I think we ought to look forward to seeing them do that again in the near future. It was a, I think they all had an interesting time down there. And the nice thing about it was, it's an enormous conference center, right next to it is like a Six Flags kind of amusement park. So, the, after the last event in the thing, they just went over to the amusement park and, you know, had an evening over there on Saturday evening, so it worked out really well. I would not recommend a 17-hour bus ride, though. I'm just saying.
Those are not much fun.
No, not much fun.
Excellent. Thank you for attending.
Well, I'm sorry that Mr. Motherway wasn't able to go.[1736.88]